I'd like to welcome everybody out tonight and ask you to stand for the Pledge of Legions.
The Pledge of Legions is to declare that the United States of America and to the Republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every justice and all.
We will get started right away with 3.0 approval of agenda.
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none of vote, please. Butcher.
Aye.
Harold.
Aye.
Irons.
Aye.
Livia Wright.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Motion carries. 4.0 consent agenda. Does anyone have an item they would like pulled from the consent agenda? Then a motion, please.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none of vote, please. Butcher.
Aye.
Harold.
Aye.
Irons.
Aye.
Livia Wright.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Motion carries. 5.0 board update. I just want to remind everybody to fill out your evaluation forms. And I guess we'll start with David. Do you have any update?
I'd just like to share a Facebook post coming today. It was kind of cute when I actually saw it. And, you know, obviously, when we get information that's on Facebook, we sometimes wonder really what our actions were. But here's really what the patron said. Huge kudos to the two men in the D-49 ban at Woodman Hills Elementary School that not only stopped for the baby birds by the school instead of continuing on the road, but also helped direct one back to its mama. Just showed four kiddos what compassion is in a world that doesn't normally do it.
I'm going to give you just a very rapid update on an event that I was at yesterday and today. There's an organization in Denver, the National Regional Educational Laboratories associated with a guy named Bob Marzano. And we use Marzano's observation tool extensively in the Power Zone as our observation tool with teachers and principals. And the Marzano Educational Laboratory hosted a summit on becoming highly reliable school. A highly reliable school is one that consistently helps students achieve higher and higher levels of performance by helping adults achieve higher and higher levels of performance, very much like what we are pursuing in our efforts for performance excellence. And so what's really exciting about this conference today is that as a zone commitment, all of the principals, almost every assistant principal, learning coaches, teacher leaders, were all there. So the Power Zone had two full tables full of their teacher and administrative leaders learning how to get better on the 8th and 9th of July, which just doesn't happen. And so that's very fresh in my mind, and I just wanted to affirm the Power Zone and Dr. Pickering in particular for having the vision and calling his team together for that purpose. That's how teams get better. They do great work during the school year, but it's in the off-season when they improve their practice and get better. And so that was exciting to see and be part of. And I think I'm supposed to stop talking.
Okay, let's move on to 6.0, our open forum. And we do have one person signed up, so I'll read my little speech unless I don't have to. Okay, then I'll let you just go. First up is Karen Hobson.
Good evening. Today, the hat that I'm wearing is the PTA liaison to DAC. And many of you may have noticed a little envelope I left at your space tonight to join the El Paso Council PTA, which covers and oversees all of the PTAs in the Colorado Springs area. The amount of dues are only $10 for the whole year, and it covers you for all of our 11 PTA schools in District 49. As you know, PTA is my passion, and I am rededicating myself to energizing the PTAs in our district to be more involved in the community. That's what they're established to do. They're not solely for fundraising, which a lot of parent groups are being used for to make up deficits. So I want to really put it out there what PTA is, what it stands for, and what it can do for this district to help strengthen the education of our kids. So I encourage you to join. You can join tonight, or you can send your envelope to Falcon Middle School where I happen to work, or next time I come to a meeting or see you in the community. But I just appreciate the support for the PTA.
I know that's how I got to this place, has started with PTA. So I truly have a passion for PTA and a love in my heart for everything that you do.
Thank you. I have one more thing that I forgot. Just to let you know that on August 15th is the annual fall training for our PTA leaders. And so you'll be getting an official invite to come during the day to talk to the PTA leaders of our PTA schools if you're available. It's a Saturday. But just wanted to give you the date so that you could have a heads up.
Anything else, Karen? You're not done with your three minutes. Okay. All right. So we have work sessions two weeks prior to this that we talked about every action item that is on here. So we have spent a prior meeting discussing all of these different action items. And so we're going to, we moved through those fairly quickly tonight. I just don't want you to think that we're not taking our time with them. We did review them at the prior meeting. So we will start with our first action item 7.01 on Evans International Innovation Plan.
After review and discussion at the last work session, I move to approve the innovation plan for Evans International as recommended by the administration.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none of vote, please. Butcher.
Aye.
Harold.
Aye.
Irons.
Aye.
Livia Wright.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Motion carries. 7.02 approval of memorandum of understanding.
I move to approve the attached memorandum of understanding.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? I didn't quite finish what I was supposed to say there. This is the memorandum of understanding for CD BOCs. I apologize, you guys. A vote, please. Butcher.
Aye.
Harold.
Aye.
Irons.
Aye.
Livia Wright.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Motion carries. 7.03 action on charter school application.
I move to approve the application from Power Technical and Trade Academy and direct the administration to initiate contract negotiations consistent with the administrative recommendations included in item 7.03A.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? I just want to say I look forward to this negotiation and the opportunity that they're bringing forward to our district. So a vote, please.
President, if I may make a comment, I'm sorry. The concept is fabulous and fantastic, but there is a problem. There is a reason. If you look at D-49's practices for authorization for charter schools, it says, and I quote, "Anyone potentially involved in the application reviews, both internal and external members of the application review team or district accountability subcommittee will disclose any relationships with applicants and disclose themselves from the application process for that applicant." I almost hate to go into this, but I have to, to be totally transparent. Denise Munn of Charter School Solutions is clearly designated as the lead evaluator. Ms. Munn and Charter School Solutions has a direct business relationship with members of the staff of James Irwin Charter Schools. Sure can. Thank you. On the Charter School Solutions list of team members, Eileen Johnson, the chief financial officer of James Irwin Charter Schools, is listed as one of the three team members. Additionally, on periodic filings, the Secretary of State, the entity named Charter School Solutions, Denise Munn is noted as the registered agent, and Eileen Johnson, the chief financial officer of James Irwin Charter School, is the filing individual. A clear connection between Charter School Solutions and James Irwin Charter Schools is evident. I hope it's not hailed. Second, Denise Munn is currently listed on the Secretary of State's website as the registered agent for Delta Schools, Inc., on a filing dated February 6, 2015. Ms. Munn, once again, is listed as the registered agent, and Eileen Johnson as the filing agent. On review of Delta School, Inc.'s website, it also indicates the team members of Delta School, Inc. Those team members include Jonathan Berg, the chief executive officer of James Irwin Charter School, and Denise Munn of Charter School Solutions. There is a direct connection between the lead reviewer Denise Munn, Charter School Solutions, and senior administrators of James Irwin Charter School. The conflict of interest is obvious. The solution, before this board moves forward with this application, is to request a totally independent third-party review of said application. This should be included in as far as reviewing all the parties, including the internal administration and DAC, as well as the totally independent third-party review by a third party with no connection either to James Irwin Charter Schools, or Falcon D-49, or its employees, or board. If we are going to live by what our standard says in our own board practice, we have to do that in order to be truly transparent. And I have the documents here.
Well, seeing how this is first, I've heard of it. I would love to get some type of response from our chiefs and see what they have to say in response to that. You know, if we could get an opportunity to hear what people say. My vote's kind of carried, so you can hear me, but the rest of us, we're going to have to speak up.
Mr. Maister, exactly how long will this last? I believe in using all your skill sets. The primary issue that Mr. Irons is identifying is the question of a conflict of interest. We operate with lots of conflicts of interest. The fundamental doctrine, and there are more legally finessed ways to say it, but the fundamental doctrine for managing a conflict of interest is to disclose and identify impacts. And both of those things, specifically with Ms. Munn, both of those things were part of our process, which is why Ms. Munn did not provide an analytical review of this application. She organized because she has provided that function for the district in the past. So in loose terms, an analogy might be that while Ms. Munn didn't participate in preparing the meal, she did bring it to our table. And so the difference between creating the content and organizing the content was critical. And we are completely satisfied with the appropriate disclosure and the appropriate insulation of other interests from evaluation. And that's what good practice is when a conflict of interest exists.
So was there disclosure of this information to the district prior?
Yes. There was additionally disclosure that our district general counselor, council, Brad Miller, also had a working relationship. So he also did not provide any evaluative, he did not perform any evaluative function. And so if you go back one year when we were evaluating other charter school applications, or even two years ago, you will see that Denise provided evaluative, or Brad provided evaluative commentary. Not this time.
Yeah. If you look on page 238, it actually lists who was in value, who from Charter School Solutions did the evaluations. And it's Tony Fontana, Brian Anderson, and Rachel Swale. So it's three people who don't have that conflict, who actually did the evaluation of the application. Those are the three external evaluators. And DAC had four separate people listed as well, also none of whom were on that list. I believe that was here. Mr. Cox, Ms. Fogler. Is it Mr. Gary and Mr. West, or Ms. Or, I don't know their, I know the first two.
Ms. and Mr.
Okay. Ms. Gary and Mr. West.
I believe so. Ms. West.
Got it backwards.
Well, you know, what I would like to do is, you know, I would like to rely on our legal team to look at these type of things beforehand and address this, you know, just for protection of the district, you know. And if they already have, then, you know, let us know, tell us, you know, because that's a concern that one of our board members has brought up. So you want us to share with us? Have to go over there.
So as Mr. Farmer approaches the podium, I will tell you that our legal team did that. Our general counsel, the office of Brad A. Miller, represented tonight by Mr. Tim Farmer, who will introduce himself as well for our streaming, and explain to you the support they've given us so far.
Thank you, Madam President and Board. I did talk to Brad about this earlier because he said it might come up. From a legal perspective, the rules of professional conduct, I mean, anytime you work in a specialized field, in this particular instance, education, there's going to be times where clients cross paths and, you know, names come up from time to time representing various clients. What the rules of professional conduct requires three things, first being disclosure, which from my understanding has happened. The second of those three things is going to be make sure there's permission from all clients. It's been disclosed, and they're all on board with moving forward. And then the last thing is making sure that each party is represented by independent counsel throughout the process. And in talking with Brad, that has taken place here. So from, at least from the legal rules of professional conduct standpoint, all of the criteria has been met to make sure that these conflicts of interest, as Mr. Hiltz mentioned, are managed properly throughout the process. It's just one of those things that sometimes is hard to avoid, you know, in a, when everybody works in education, you know, people cross paths from time to time, just making sure everyone's aware and everybody has given the appropriate permission and recuse themselves where necessary. So.
Okay, so I'd also like to point out that both our District 49 reviewers, so all of our own staff that looked at this, so Amber and Peter, and I think there was about six or eight different people, and the DAC rated this application higher than the external evaluators did, by about half a point. So if anything, our people were looking at it more favorably than people who may have had a connection to someone who had a connection to the application, because their average was a 3.06 for scores. That was CCS's average. The calculated average score of our staff was 3.45, where a three, anything a three or a four is usually recommended for acceptance. And our DAC had a 3.25 overall, 3.46 as their section scores. The only reason that overall application one is lower is because if I remember right, Mr. Cox sent us all his email, and his only concern, and the reason he gave it was a one, was because there was no language requirement, which we're addressing as a part of in the negotiations. He said he would have rated it much higher. He would have given it the average of his scores, which are almost all fours. He's got two twos in here, one three, and the rest are fours. His only concern was the lack of requiring a language, and that is being addressed by our admin. So our internal people are all rating this as something that is, would be a significant benefit to our district and should be accepted.
I have no, yeah, I have no problem with the charter school itself. My problem is with the transparency of the evaluation process. I have one more question. Relative to budget, the one person in this district that should have reviewed the budget didn't. Mr. Ridgeway at no time, according to the information we have, actually reviewed the budget. It's not on here, but the only person in the district environment that reviewed the budget was Mr. Bonavita. So have you actually reviewed the budget? And if so, how did you read it?
So I think what you're referring to is the online review process, right? And then you're right, I did not, I did not log that into that system. And I should have done that. I reviewed the budget on a, on a, on a fairly high level. And I did not see any, any flags, nothing flagged to me that seemed to, to infringe, or limit their, their ability to execute that plan. So, and so, yes, I apologize. I did not get that reviewed into the system as I should have.
I will also say that I submitted some questions to, I guess, you, and it kind of made the rounds. And I appreciate the responses everybody gave. Very valid. The one major question I had, and I can address it, Mr. Berg, I guess, and, all right, maybe that'll work. Okay, was the fact that I couldn't see how, if you need 30,000 to 40,000 square feet of space to begin your process, that you could begin your process with only 13,000 square feet of space available at Patriot Learning Center. I understand what's going on now. I wish I'd have known that in the first place, then it would have been a lot easier for me to grasp. But it appears, I guess, from what Mr. Peter said to me in his response back, that only part of your program will, in essence, be conducted at Patriot Learning Center. Is that a fair statement?
And please introduce yourself before.
Okay. Yes, I'm Jonathan Berg. I'm the chief executive officer for James Irwin Charter Schools. And yes, we are looking at a two-campus solution. We are currently in negotiation for a piece of property in District 49. So we're moving down that road as rapidly as we can.
I will confess, Mr. Berg, had I really understood that it was a two-campus exercise, and it really didn't reflect that in your initial application as such, it would have made things a lot easier for me to understand. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any further comments? Are we ready for a vote?
Actually, if I That's okay. I just want to clarify, because it really seems like the issue is that we have undisclosed conflicts of interest here. And I would like a definitive, we're all potential, were the conflicts properly disclosed. That may be a question for Mr. Farmer. I'm not sure who handled those disclosures.
Let me read into the record. On April 7, 2015, Ms. Munn contacted me by email. I preserved that, as we should, and says, and in that email, I won't read the entire context of it, says that "I will not participate in either review." At the time, we had two applicants that had notified us of intent to apply as an external reviewer to help with the capacity interviewer. So I won't read all of the language, but that disclosure happened formally in a, in a permanent and durable recorded way on April 7, 2015. And as part of our analysis of our, not just our analysis of the application, but our analysis of our review of the application, we properly insulated the evaluative judgment from the organizational management part of it. So I'm saying here, on the record, we were fully informed of conflicts of interest. They were properly managed, properly disclosed, and did not impact the administration's recommendation.
Thank you, Chuck. Thank you for bringing that up. Did not know. And thank you, Peter, for finding that and clarifying it and reading that into the record.
One last comment. I'm excited. I work with a lot of employers in my day job. And the, there's a reoccurring theme of the lack of skilled trade workers. And there's a lot of people that are excited about this program. I am truly excited about it, and I'm glad we're working with James Irwin on this. And I think it is definitely something that will benefit our students and will also benefit a broader community, and will help make it a stronger community. And I just applaud everybody on this, and probably one of the most exciting things I've seen in a long time. Thank you.
I'll say one more thing, because I want to tail on what Kevin said. Setting aside my questions, about 51% of our graduates don't go on to college for a two-year institution. So this is an opportunity for a lot of those folks to gain some skills that become marketable skills in, in the real world. I think of one, and Kevin will probably back me on this one, that home builders are looking for qualified folks to help build homes, and they can't find them. And so is there a real need for this? Yes, Mr. Berg, I'm glad you came to us with it. I just want everything to be above board and proper so that there is never a question down the road. Okay?
Then I'm going to call for a vote, please. I second. Oh. Butcher.
Yes.
Harold.
Aye.
Irons.
Aye.
Livia Wright.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, we will, in between all this rain, and I hope our cars are not washing away out there. I'm glad the blinds are up, so I don't have to see. So next is 7.04 with action on professional development date change for the 1516 Power Zone calendar.
I move to approve the professional development date change for the 201516 Power Zone calendar.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none of vote, please. Butcher.
Aye.
Harold.
Aye.
Irons.
Aye.
Livia Wright.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Motion carries. 7.05 approval of board appointments.
I move to approve Kevin Butcher to serve as the District 49 delegate to the FCBC Board.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, is this punishment for me going on vacation in the spirit of full disclosure? I really want to know.
Yeah. It was commented that when you don't attend a meeting, you get appointed to things. So you weren't here to say you didn't want to do it, so we assumed you would. And I personally thank you very much for doing it. Now, you don't have, you can't abstain from your own vote. You have to vote. So a vote, please. Butcher.
If I have to, yes.
Harold.
Aye.
Irons.
Aye.
Livia Wright.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Motion A carries. Onto motion B, please.
I move to appoint Marie Laverne Wright to serve as the District 49 delegate to the CD BOCs Board.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? A vote, please. Butcher.
Yes.
Harold.
Aye.
Irons.
Aye.
Livia Wright.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations, and thank you both for taking on those extra duties. Next up is 7.06, approval of CEO annual evaluation metrics.
I move to approve the Chief Education Officer's annual evaluation metrics presented in item 7.06A.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none of vote, please. Butcher.
Aye.
Harold.
Aye.
Irons.
Aye.
Livia Wright.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Motion carries. 7.07, action on administrative reorganization.
After discussion and review of the previous work session, I move to approve the proposed administrative reorganization.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
This isn't a major reorganization. This is just a minor shift of who reports to whom to better balance between our shift chiefs. I know the word reorganization has had different meetings in our time in District 49, so I want to make it very clear, all we're doing is changing a couple of people from reporting to Peter to reporting from reporting to Peter to reporting to Brett and Jack to better align with what they do in their day-to-day work. So this isn't a major restructuring of the district in any way, shape, or form.
That is the hot seat always, so, just so you know. A vote, please.
Aye.
Harold?
Aye.
Irons?
Aye.
Livia Wright?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Motion carries. 7.08, action on policies.
After review and discussion, I move to approve the five policies as revised in item 7.08A.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none of vote, please. Butcher?
Aye.
Harold?
Aye.
Irons?
Aye.
Livia Wright?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Motion carries. Motion B of that item, please.
After previous discussion, I move to approve the recommended revisions to the eight policies in item 7.08B.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none of vote, please. Butcher?
Aye.
Harold?
Aye.
Irons?
Aye.
Livia Wright?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Motion carries. 7.09, approval of resolution. I'll let you say the motion.
I move to approve the attached resolution for official notice of intent for Falcon School District 49 to participate in the coordinated election on November 3, 2015, and to appoint Donna Ridger as the designated election official.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. Any discussion? I just have one comment to read into the record, is there will be a board candidate information workshop on Thursday, August 6, 2015, from 5:00 to 6:00 in the boardroom here. A vote, please. Butcher?
Aye.
Harold?
Aye.
Irons?
Aye.
Livia Wright?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Motion carries. 7.10.
I move to approve the attached resolution for call for nominations for school director candidates.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none of vote, please. Harold, I'm sorry, Butcher?
Yes.
Harold?
Aye.
Irons?
Aye.
Livia Wright?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Motion carries. We are on to 7.11, action on revision of job descriptions, existing job descriptions.
After discussion at the previous work session, I move to approve the revisions to the two job descriptions in item 7.11.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none of vote, please. Butcher?
Aye.
Harold?
Aye.
Irons?
Aye.
Livia Wright?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Motion carries. Our last action, item 7.12, approval of resolution of director district.
I move to approve the attached resolution, Plan of Representation and Associated Ballot Language Regarding Director District Board Representation.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. Any comments?
Mr. Farmer, you might need to get up there. All right. Tonight, we are being asked to approve a ballot measure which will affect a core right that is reflected both in the U.S. Constitution and the state constitution, one person, one vote. We need to get it totally correct, without question. We were given three initial plans of representation by the administration on June 11. Now, 28 days later, we are asked to vote on a final ballot measure. As a board and district, we spent over 15 months and 40 meetings of all types to determine the components of our bond on the last November election. Now, we are about to change a fundamental right of voter enfranchisement with less than 30 days' worth of review. The plan before us must, I repeat, must, meet four specific requirements which define director districts. These four requirements are found in 2231-109 to A through D. Would you get to that page, please, because you're going to need it? Okay? The plan fails to meet half of these mandatory requirements. The statute states, and I quote, "Director district shall be contiguous, compact, and composed of whole precincts as established pursuant to Section 15101 CRS by the clerk of the county in which the precincts are located." Did I quote that right?
Correct.
Thank you. As publicized in the media last May, on May 12, both on TV and in the Gazette, the El Paso County Clerk revised precincts across El Paso County. In the D-49 subdivision, the clerk revised boundaries on 15 precincts, added seven new precincts, and eliminated one. This plan does not reflect any of those revisions. The director district boundaries on Exhibit A, which we received in our packet, of the proposed plan of representation are based on boundaries which no longer exist. All of the five director districts do not have legally defined boundaries, and thus, the plan will not stand up to legal review and is thus not a legal plan of representation. Okay, you want to comment on that before I go forward?
I mean, just on that, the district has it until March 1 of the year after the election.
Uh-uh. The director districts must have configured defined boundaries in the plan of representation, which is presented to the public. The plan of representation, which is in our packet, which has Example A, I think it's called, or Amendment A, whatever, shows boundaries for director districts. They are predicated on precinct boundaries. Those precincts do not exist, and they haven't existed since May 12, 2015. All you have to do is to go to the county clerk's office, which I did yesterday, and get a new map of the precincts. They do not correspond to the precincts that are indicated here, and your plan of representation is missing seven precincts. It's missing precincts 407, 408, 409, 416, 421, 446, and 447. Therefore, it doesn't cut it. Now, there's more to this, but let's... I think what you need to do is to go back and take another look at this myself and make sure that the precincts or the director districts that we are showing the public on the plan of representation are, in fact, legal director districts. And right now, they're not.
So if it makes the board feel more comfortable, you do have until August 5 to propose this, 90 days before the election. But it does say in 2231-110B2, it says not later than March 1 of the year following the year in which the election is conducted. You have to have the director districts organized, and then it's every two years after the census, every 10th year thereafter.
It also says that by July 17, 110 days before the election, we must approve, approve, a plan of representation. And then on in the statute, it says that plan of representation must, must meet the items in 109. Better go back and take a look.
I'm happy to do that, and, you know, we have a little bit of time to go and look at it, but...
But as far as the director districts are concerned, they are not legal director districts. On the plan of representation in front of us today that we are supposed to be voting on, they are not legal director districts. Now, you guys can vote, you can do whatever you want, but as soon as it gets to the county clerk, it'll be challenged in District Court, and it'll be thrown out. So because they don't reflect precincts.
Okay, so I, like I said, there's, I think, a variety of ways that we can do this. I think that you can either, you know, make a motion or amend a motion to correct that. It sounds like it's a relatively easy correction.
Actually, it's pretty complicated. Because, once again, when you get into the population issue and the director district populations, you have to have audited 2010 census data for each of the new director district, or for each of the new precincts, and then you formulate those director districts. That's also stated in the statute.
Yeah, so it'll be based on 2010 census, must be current precincts.
Current precincts.
Right.
Thank you. That's the new ones as of May 12.
Brett, can I ask you a question, please?
Hello, Brett Midway, Chief Business Officer.
All right. With what has been brought up here, how your department created the precinct divisions, correct?
Yes, we created the three scenarios.
Okay. How long will it take to redo the maps with the new information that Mr. Irons has brought forward? Could you possibly have that ready if we were to have to have a special meeting before the 17th of July to vote for that?
I would be able, I guess I can't say definitively. My folks who worked on that aren't here. But I would be able to tell you with enough advance notice for, you know, posting of a special meeting timeline and stuff like that, whether we were able to deliver that or not.
All right, so let's keep this in mind as we're thinking through this, and as Mr. Iron brings up a few more points that he has, keep in mind that we might need to have a special meeting. So be thinking of your calendars and any other, any potential questions that need to come out tonight, please bring them forward tonight so that we can get on with this item.
I got a little bit confused. You were talking about August 5, and...
I misstated, it's 110 days. I thought it was 90, so it would be...
So it'd be July 17 is the actual date. Okay, just want to make clarify.
My next Friday.
Okay.
Yeah. Can I go on?
Please go on.
Okay. Item 2, let's get it all out. Director district shall be as nearly equal in population as possible based on the most recent United States Census. That census, obviously, is the 2010 census. And I've done two reviews, but I'll give you the original three scenarios that we were presented, A, B, and C, back on June 11. The difference between the highest and lowest director district population in Scenario A was 3,827 votes. Scenario B, the one that's in front of us, was 1,961 votes. Scenario C came closer to meeting the statutory standard. It only had a difference between the highest and lowest of 681 votes. If you'll recall, I believe the statute said, where did I go here? Equal in population as possible. The word "possible" is an interesting thing. So in questioning what is meant by the statute, as equal as possible caused me to do some research. A, in state legislative districts, the standard is a 1% variance. In El Paso County commissioner districts, it is also a similar 1% variance. To clarify the definition, I contacted the 12 major school districts which currently have director district plans of representation. The consensus opinion is as follows. The population variance between director districts must be less than 2% on the mean. Okay? In the case of D-49, based on the 2010 census and the information that was originally supplied to us, there was a census value in the D-49 subdivision of 73,883 total population. With five director districts, that means the mean is 14,777. The resulting 2% deviation can be no more than 296 voters plus or minus. The total population in each district must be between 14,481, based on the 2010 census, and 15,073. The director districts must fall within that window. Once again, all five director districts in Plan B fall outside that window. Now, yesterday, I was able to get a specific range data from seven of those 12 school districts. Okay? JFCO, .7 variance. Cherry Creek, 1.5. Adams-Rapaho, 1.1. Adams-12, 1%. St. Ferine, .2. I don't know how they did that. Pewter, 1.1. Thompson, 1.3. Lewis-Palmer, .6. Clearly, all districts have set a standard which can be maintained. So we need to go back and take a look at that part of it, too. Okay?
Okay. Do you want, Chuck, can you please send them that? Can you send that to Brett?
Sure.
Your information, so that we can make sure that they have exactly what you have interpretation through the statute, and we can...
I also found a plan of representation from JFCO, and it lists the map, as ours does. It lists the population of each of the districts, and then it lists the population of each of the precincts, so that it verifies the population of the director districts. Because right now, you're just looking at numbers, and you can't, there is no verification or certification that those numbers came, they're going to come from the sky. They need to be certified 2010 census.
I would like a point of clarification from legal for Brett and his team on what explicitly has to be determined for the ballot and what we are allowed to determine post-vote. So in terms of the, you know, the little finite balancing and shifting and finessing that has to occur to make sure that we're within the 1%, maybe a different deadline than the ballot language deadline. I don't know that, and I want a legal opinion, which would be Brad's team, because that determines the level of work Brett's team needs to do so that we can make sure we have this prepared for the ballot. I'm a little frustrated that we're in July and we're hearing this now when our staff could have been working on it earlier. So I think it's a little unfair to Brett's team. So at this point, I'd like to make sure that we vary, that if you can help Brett's team to find the scope of what they need to have done to meet what legally we have to have for the ballot, I greatly appreciate that.
I help you out, damn right, man. 2231-105, A and B tell us whether we can do it through signature or through the board vote. But Item C, a director district plan of representation developed pursuant to A or B, is of this subsection, shall be subject to the specifications in 2231-109, and that's what we've been referencing. So those specifications have to be reflected in the plan of representation. That's cut and dry. Okay? Now, frankly, as far as I'm concerned, I think we ought to do a very good job of defining, A, the director districts, population variances, what it says in here you have to do. And if it doesn't get on the ballot till the 2016 ballot, so be it, because it's not going to affect any election until 2017 anyway. So I'm going to get it right. The only reason I bring this up is to get it right.
Yeah, just to that point, it would have to wait until '17, because that's to be during a biennial election. It would have to wait until '17, because it has to be during a biennial election, during a school election.
Okay, well, then it would have to wait till '17, and it wouldn't affect an election until '19, I guess. The point is, I don't want to rush into this just because we have a deadline, which is a week from Friday, to throw something together. I want to get it right.
Okay, here. So what I'm going to ask is everybody to check your calendar for the 16th and see if we can have a special meeting. If in that time Brett and Mr. Farmer, you decide that you cannot get this information, then we will not, we will have to decide if we are ready to move forward or how we can do this at that meeting. But at this point, I think we need to look at our calendars, and on the 16th, come back with the information as Mr. Iron has brought forward some concerns that he has. with the information, as Mr. Iron has brought forward some concerns that he has, to get clarity and make sure we have everything that we need to be accurate for our ballot language.
One more thing, too. Okay. Ballot language for the adoption of the Falcon School Board Director Board Plan of Representation, okay? And here you say districts are contiguous, compact, and nearly equal in population is practicable. The statute specifically uses the word possible. It doesn't use the word practicable. And so there may be nuances in different definitions there, and you need to use what's in the statute.
Okay, that's an easy change.
I just got really confused, so I was going to ask a simple question. Mr. Farmer, does your office has reviewed this language that we were going to approve tonight?
Yeah, we drafted most of it as well as...
Did you feel like it met, did you guys believe, did it meet the statutory requirements?
The redrawn precincts was a surprise to me. I hadn't heard of that yet. That's probably the larger concern at this point.
So that is a legitimate concern?
Yeah, if there's certain, clearly, if there's certain precincts that aren't included in the plan.
I want to be sure, because I just want to make sure, with all respect, Mr. Irons, I believe I would rather have an attorney's opinion than yours. So that's what I'm trying to get, I mean, because the statute is, and I want to make sure that, so you don't believe what you, the language that you guys had for us tonight works because of the redrafting of the districts of the precincts?
Correct. Where I might disagree, and again, I think it's worth at least sitting down and looking at before I give a final opinion, but I do think we have until March 1st of next year to finalize. If you read the next statute, it says by March 1st of the year following the election, and then March 1st of 2032 and every 10 years thereafter, you have to have the director districts finalized.
What are we showing the voters in November to vote on then? But the map isn't part of the ballot question, is my understanding.
It's made available here at the district office, won't literally be on the ballot, but it'll be open for public inspection.
Okay.
I think we have been very adamant that we are going to be transparent and accurate with this, so I personally think with the new precincts and different stuff that we do need to have that second look, just from me personally. I don't want to have any concerns about transparency with our public.
Yeah, I'm about solutions, so, you know, is it possible within a week's time to have that type of information available for us to re, you know, to have the districts correct so it'll be 2% as Chuck has pointed out?
Well, again, the 2% was not specified in statute. It was as possible. So that is a number. Is it arbitrary? Is it?
Okay, it's possible.
Practice is something arbitrary. We could have debate about that.
Right.
So, you know, if we set a special meeting for the 16th, then what I had said earlier is that I will know prior to the time that we have to give notice for holding special meeting 24 hours before anything, I'll know whether we can have that or not.
Okay.
So that gives me a couple of days to do that.
Okay.
Just to cover one more point, if I might, there was kind of an implication that I had not brought this forward. I actually didn't discover the director precinct boundaries until I went to the county clerk's office this morning to get a new precinct map for the coming election. Took it home and compared it to the, and I went, what the heck is going on here? You got 30 precincts on this one, you got 24 on this one, something's wrong. So that's when I discovered that. The population issue, yeah, I've been researching that because that's been bothering me. But the other...
So in the spirit of transparency, which is a two-way street, I guess I'd like for you to share information that you learned as you learned it as well, and bring up questions.
As far as the precincts, I just took the precinct map home and compared it to the one I already had, and said, this is not right.
I understand that. I understand that, but you did it this morning? Okay.
About 10 o'clock this morning.
Okay.
All right, so would have been good, is what he's asking, if next time you could have brought that up, then we could have had that right up front. And just for moving forward, if we can just not have these gotcha-type moments at the meeting would be helpful for everyone, because now we're, we're all a little confused right now, and we just need to make sure that we get this right. So let's, let's just go and put on our calendars on the 16th, on Thursday, to right now for a special meeting, and if three of us can be here, that's great, and we can, if we can't get it, then we can always cancel the meeting, but let's make sure we get it on our calendar now.
I can do either the morning or anytime after 5:30, depending on what works for other people, and free until about noon, or actually 11:30.
Kevin, are you good for... Yes.
I'll make myself available.
Thank you.
I'll be here.
Thank you.
Not in the morning, though.
No, let's do an evening. Let's do an evening. Let's do it at 6 o'clock. We'll tentatively post for a special meeting at 6 o'clock. And as soon as you can get that information to us, that would be great. If it is the day of the meeting, that is what it has to be.
All right, I will follow up with everyone. What I know, when I know it.
Thank you very much for all of that. So I will ask for the motion to be withdrawn, and we will move it to our special meeting.
I withdraw my motion.
Don't need a second, so we are, I thank you very much, both of you. All right, now we are on to, we had no information items 8.0, we are on to 9.0, our discussion items. Our first one is our bond refinance proposal, and that will be Mr. Ridgeway starting us off.
Brett Ridgeway, Chief Business Officer. So we've done a couple of refinancings of both bonds and certificates of participation lately, because we're kind of reaching that point in the maturity cycle of these instruments where that becomes feasible. As you recall, we did a rather large refinancing of the certificates of participation back in February, and, you know, that involves generating a lot of work for that process. And so once that was completed, we began pondering what, are there any other opportunities that we would like to pursue, specifically looking at the bond portfolio that we have? And so Mr. Bell from Stifel Nicolaus is here to help talk to us about what we have looked at and what we would be proposing.
Afternoon again, always good to see you guys. So much fun to come and listen. So here's the good news. This is actually kind of a cool opportunity that you might have here. Every once in a while, Brett and I sit down and spend several hours together, and something brilliant comes up, and it's, this is one of those moments, so I'm really proud of that, just so you know. Do I go through the slides, or do you just want me to chat in there?
I can do that if you want me to.
And let's go ahead, just hit the button. Okay, so basically what you've got is there are three sets of general obligation bonds outstanding, 2006, 2006B, and 2013 that we did a couple of years ago, and their final maturity is 2021. What we're proposing that you consider here is, and all of these have been refinanced before, so the IRS and the service tells us this, that we can only do a certain number of tax-exempt advance refundings, but what we're going to suggest to you this evening is that we do a refinancing of all three of these on a taxable basis and use what's left of the district's bond fund, and this is the cool part. So if we do the taxable refunding plus the district's bond fund, we can actually get you out of general obligation debt by the end of 2016. So, very cool. Doesn't happen very often, but what that would do is effectively shorten the remaining term of the bonds from 2021 to 2016, keeping our tax rates consistent with what's existing. We're not raising anybody's taxes here. We're simply taking the mechanism that we have, putting all the remaining debt on about a something less than 2% rate for one year, and then using the funds that are in the bond fund to pay down all of your...